Good evening, everybody. This is the May 3 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School District School Board, regular meeting. And to start well to say, thank you for hosting us at MoHaramit tonight. It's great to be here. We will start our meeting with the approval of the agenda. I do have two additions. The first one is regarding two positions, one for a high school PE teacher and one for a MoHaramit school psychologist. So we will add that to our discussion and action item. And the second one is a mowing and landscape bid, also under discussion and action item. And with those changes, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Tom?
No moves.
Have a second? Gianna?
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. Next, we have public comments. Anyone here for public comments this evening? Okay. Moving on then, we have approval of the April 19 regular meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Tom?
I move to approve the April 19 minutes.
And a second? Gianna?
Second.
Any changes? Gianna?
Page one. My name is apparently challenging to spell. So I sent that to Karen to correction on page one. On page two, to edit June 20th-
Gianna, can you pull your microphone close enough, please?
Yes. These are weird and different. Okay. To add, say, June 20 hyphen 24, it's easier to read. Change for their helping to for their help. And then on page three, misspelling my name twice to G E L S E Y. So I'm Gianna Jelsey. I know. It's a stinker.
Did you get those? Okay. Thank you, Gianna.
Any other changes? I have two. On page two at the top, when Brian made his motion, I believe the motion was to actually change the agenda template to reflect that public comments is open for 30 minutes, not just that the motion isn't just to open public comments for 30 minutes, but to actually reflect that in the agenda template. And then the second change is on the bottom of page two. For the student rep report, it should be the youth risk behavior survey, not just the risk behavior survey. And with those changes, all in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. All right. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district.
Good evening. David Goldsmith from here, MoHaramit. Welcome. Thank you very much for being in our building. Before I talk about new happenings, I'd like to point out the incredible happening that happened right behind you, which is this beautiful, beautiful wall here in our cafeteria. This gorgeous mural, which features, of course, the pumpkin patch, our own sugar shack with our logo on it, maple trees, birch trees, a lot of the things that are very special to learning here at MoHaramit. They connect to the landscaping that we did out front in connection with indigenous plantings. They represent the two big curricular enrichment activities that we do every year. Of course, we grow and harvest pumpkins and celebrate with our pumpkin stroll, and we, of course, tap trees, maple trees. So we're really excited about this. This was something that I got to work very closely with Doris Demers on. This was her lead. She worked and found a company that does this for schools, and I got to work very closely with her. And in, you know, MoHaramit, Oyster River tradition, we used opinions from our students, our staff. I spoke in the cafeteria here with all five grades throughout the winter, getting their ideas for what should be on our wall. And we were really excited to have this done. They did it in two days.
Wow.
Or really a day and a half. And it's been very exciting. And it happened right before our pancake breakfast, so it was a great way to have a lot of the community see it all at once. So I think that's very cool. Things that are happening in the month of May here at MoHaramit and in K4, both at Mastway and MoHaramit. We are, of course, preparing for next year already. We've sent out our parent questionnaires to elicit feedback from families about their students' year. That helps us with placement and just preparations for next year. So we do that every year. We have our state assessment testing coming up this month. We have letters going out to our third and fourth grade families at the end of this week that will give them all the information they need from the state. We're working with Principal Richard at the middle school to finalize all of the schedules for all the transition work that we do for our fourth graders to fifth graders. We're having, of course, Principal Richard visit our students at both Mastway and MoHaramit. A school counselor is coming to do some open circle conversations with all of the classes. We are taking our students and bringing them to the middle school. We do that jointly. And we're also, of course, having an evening for families to meet at the middle school and get their questions answered. So we're excited about all those transitions that we're preparing. And then here at MoHaramit specifically, it is Year of the Forest, and our annual Day of event is happening in May on Thursday, the 25th of May. We'll be here on campus doing a whole host of activities that are related to site-based learning here about the forest. And we do have some off-site work for some of our older students, both at Kimmon Farm and at the Thompson Mill at UNH that we're really excited about. We're collaborating with a lot of our community educators through the Audubon Society and UNH and Extension and CELT and all sorts of great groups. So we're really excited about that. Questions, comments, thoughts? Mr. Bacon?
When is the questionnaire due? When would you like it back by?
I was hoping to have it back right before break.
Oh.
And we are happy to accept them when you have them.
Okay. I just want to remind the board that the microphones are different and you need to pull them towards your mouth, otherwise we're not going to be able to hear your voice.
The more children you have, the later the date is acceptable.
So 2026.
Exactly. Yes. Yeah. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Not quite as tall as David. So there you go. Good evening, Misty Lowe, Mastway School. Principal Goldsmith and I work very closely together, so I don't want to repeat many of the things he just shared around STAR and SAS and fourth grade transition. Many of the things that we do, we partner together. So I'm going to share more specifically. I'd like to do a public shout-out to the PTO at Mastway. They are really working hard to do a variety of fundraising, as well supporting the fourth and fifth grade transition and the celebrations that come with that. They're also doing a lot of things next week to celebrate teachers and bus drivers and other folks in our school community, just to show appreciation. An important date I want to be sure and share with the public and the board is we have our annual art show at Mastway. That will be on May 30 at 5:30 in the evening, and I would love to invite you all to attend that. And then, as I said, Principal Goldsmith and I work closely together. One committee that the two of us are leading together is a great group of educators from both Mastway and MoHaramit are meeting together to talk about how we communicate student progress to our parents. So the committee right now is talking about how we utilize our progress reporting, how we utilize parent conferences, and any other touchpoints that we do with parents in the community about how their students are progressing throughout the school year. So that committee continues to work, and I just wanted to share that with you so that you know that is some things happening in the background. Any questions for me? Yes?
Can you repeat what time the art show is?
Be happy to. The art show is 5:30 to 7:00 PM, May 30 at Mastway. And again, for, I would like to just publicly share a couple of dates to support our PTO. They're working hard to get these events out to the community. So I'll take this opportunity to share that if anyone who wants to go to dinner or order dinner takeout from Clark's in Durham downtown on Wednesday, May 10, that would support the PTO and the students at Mastway School. They are also hosting the May Fair, which is a fun event on May 19. Anyone who wants to go to dinner on June 5, you could go to Chipotle in Dover. And again, that would support Mastway School. So those are just a couple of the many things our PTO does to support our students.
Chipotle, date again?
Chipotle, I know. It's a favorite, right? You ready to write that down?
Mm-hmm.
June 5 at the Dover location. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Jay Richard, Principal of the Middle School. Just a couple of quick notes. Principal Noe and I are working on the eighth and ninth grade transition. We'll share those dates when we have them ready, but just like Misty and David share, we're planning those activities. May 17, the next school board meeting, we have our Empty Bowls art show. It's going to be right at the middle school, so when you attend the next board meeting, that'll be right in the Learning Commons. Joe Boucher, Kim Marshall, we've been working closely with Doris Demers as well. There will be ice cream, empty bowls. It's also a fundraiser for N68 Hours, so look forward to that on the next school board meeting. SAS testing starts next week at the middle school. We're doing two assessments next week, reading and writing. DC trip, we had a wonderful trip. We had 130 students attend, the most we've ever had. Everyone got home safely. And if you want to share, you know, any student in the eighth grade that wants to attend that trip does attend, and we fundraise behind the scenes, so if people need assistance, we provide that. Our robotics team, they're wrapping things up. We have six teams down in Texas. Lot of updates from my coaches. One of the really cool opportunities our kids get for this tournament is they're participating with students from all around the world. I saw some really cool videos from kids. Our teams would compete with other teams from other countries. One of our teams received a design award. Keep in mind, the kids name their teams. They're the Lunatics. And it's amazing, really, because with this recognition, they're one of the top 10 design teams in the world in their age group. So that's very, very special. And that's all I have. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe from the high school. First, we are celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week this week. Historically, it's been the first week in May, and so we kept that. We're going to do a couple treats also next week, recognizing National Teacher Appreciation Week, so our amazing teachers get two weeks of celebration. So I let them know that this morning at our faculty meeting also, so it was purposeful that it was this week. We have underclassmen awards next week, May 11. And so invitations specifically to the kiddos getting awards and their families have gone out, but every family and anyone in the community is invited to attend that. I did want to give a shout-out to Avery Martenson. She was our student this morning. Our theme this year is discover the possibilities. And so every faculty meeting so far this year, Sean Peschel, our ELO coordinator, has helped find a student that has done something to discover the possibilities that either Oyster River High School or the district or the community offers. And so Avery came this morning and talked to faculty about her Girl Scout conference she went to and everything she learned from that. And there were kids from, I think it was nine countries and seven states, or it was the opposite, seven countries and nine states. But 200 girls were there with many workshops, engineering, things that she did and accomplished. And so it was really just nice to hear the different things kids in our community are able to do. So I wanted to make sure she was recognized for that. And then our senior art show is the day after Mastway, so it is May 31 from 5 to 7 in the NPR. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Board announcements and commendations?
We'll probably talk about this next one, too, but I want to thank Joe Boucher, the one of the two art teachers at the middle school, for inviting school board members and administrators and all sorts of folks to come in and make bowls. So I was able to do that, and it was really fun. And I actually got to do it with Sue and Doris. That just happened to work out. And the event on the 17th should be pretty fun. It's that you can come, you can buy your kid's bowl that they made in art, or you can buy another kid's bowl that isn't on the reserved table, as well as get ice cream sundaes for the whole family. So it sounds like a really exciting event. He's super excited about it, and everybody should put it on their calendars because it seems like it's going to be a great event.
Other board comments?
I have one. It's just a reminder to board members that if you have questions for any of our administrators to go through Jim. And the reason for that is that, a couple things. One is that other board members may have the same question, and we don't want to have, you know, different board members emailing, hey, how about this? Hey, how about this? If it goes through Jim, then it all gets, you know, one time through. And the other reason is that that information may be something that even if another board member didn't think to ask, may be information that they would like to have. So if it goes through Jim, then he can distribute that information to all the board members. And any other, any other comments? Okay. So going on to district reports, Assistant Superintendent?
Good evening. I have a few. I just wanted to thank John Bromley, Rachel Allen, and Sarah O'Brien for their work the week before vacation around Earth Week and all of the different activities that happened in the building. So I just want to thank them for that. Summer planning and programming continues, ESY reach and credit recovery. That's still, that planning is continuing, and notifications going home to families. And we're excited to have all of that happening at the middle school. The principals, Catherine and I have been working to finalize the four teacher workshop days in June, and those plans will be completed and probably within the next few weeks, and faculty will be notified after they're completed and reviewed to make sure that there isn't any conflict with some of the district-wide things that are occurring. Faculty continue to submit professional development requests or opportunities that they'd like to participate in over the summer, and we will be reviewing that as a leadership team probably next week sometime, just to go over what it is that they're requesting, what we can accomplish on those four days in June. So we're very excited about all the opportunities that we have this summer. And faculty, as well as leadership, have been taking advantage of some professional development opportunities that have been provided by some grant money. And they are around restorative practices with the International Institute for Restorative Practices, as well as the New Hampshire Learning Initiative. And the New Hampshire Learning Initiative is not focused on restorative practices, it's focused on curriculum design and assessment practices. And so we have groups of faculty that have been participating in those two opportunities and continue to do so, and will likely continue all the way through the remainder of this school year. If there are more faculty members that are, and more members of leadership that are interested in continuing that work, we'll look at extending that into next year if the opportunity presents itself. As you all know, Brian Ryan will not be returning next year, and Brian is our new faculty coordinator who works very closely with me on welcoming and transitioning new faculty to Oyster River. So a posting has gone out to the faculty looking for a new coordinator, and so we're really excited that there's been multiple people that have been within the district for a number of years that have expressed interest in doing that. So I will have more information for you about that as we progress through that process. And I just want to follow up on what the principals stated about the SAS testing. We do have SAS, the state assessments happening throughout the district. And one of the things that's new is that the state is providing a parent-family portal. So what will happen, instead of families receiving a paper copy in the mail, as they did last year, we will be sending information to families after the, after the state has the assessments completed and posted for families. We'll be sending families information about how to access the family portal. So the letters that you will receive from the principals will be information about the SAS testing, but it's not going to be, it's not going to include that information as of yet. That we will send separately when the results are released. And I just want to send out a couple of thank yous. I want to thank Sarah Farwell and Ellen Irvin for all of their work behind the scenes with me on Eureka Square, getting all of the training, ensuring that faculty feel supported, that they have the tools that they need. And so I want to thank them. I also would like to thank the four principals, because this is a week to celebrate the principals. And so I would like to publicly thank them for all of their dedication to the students, to faculty, and to the community. So thank you, Misty, David, Jay, and Becca. Anyone have any questions? Tom?
I had a question on the, you handed out this NHSAA review of the 306 guidelines. Now, my understanding is Fred Bramante is coming to the community for a question?
Yeah, I'll cover that in my part.
You're going to cover that? Okay. Then I think I'll just wait for you to talk about it. Okay? Thanks.
Any other questions? Ryan?
I know this is a very small portion of our, of our community, but you said the results will be sent out electronically. There are a few families that probably cannot access those. What is the option for them?
Absolutely. So the letter that will go home will talk about the multiple options for families to access, and one of them will be paper, to be able to access it through paper, whether we mail it to them or they come to the building and pick it up. That will be an option for families, absolutely. We want, we want the results to be accessible to all families. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
So I'm going to invite Rebecca and Catherine to the podium, because I want to share the acknowledgement of a special employee tonight that works for both of them, and they can explain how this all happened. So the first thing I want to say to the board is we now have another employee this year that is being recognized for, by her peers and by, for her professionalism. And this one happens to be our high school nurse, Kim Wolf. She's been recognized as the 2023 New Hampshire Healthcare Hero.
Oh, awesome.
So I'll turn it over to you guys to explain what all that means.
Sure. So Sean Peschel and I were talking about how to find ways to recognize Kim Wolf and the health office. Since, you know, she's come to the district, she's provided invaluable services to our students, and Kim is the person for many students in our high school that gets them through the day. So Sean actually had found an opportunity, and we connected also with Heather McEnoff in terms of making a recommendation for the New Hampshire Healthcare Hero Award. And so the process is, you know, fairly simple. It's an online application. Some letters are recommendation that Heather and I both wrote and nominated for this award, and Kim has been recognized for this award. They, the New Hampshire Healthcare Committee will be coming to the high school, and we're going to be working on scheduling that very soon, hopefully at a faculty meeting we were talking about. But we have to talk with Becca a little bit more about that so that Kim does get the deserved recognition that she very much deserves. And they're going to bring some swag for her and, and really talk it up. So it's, 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 what's really special about this award is it's a Healthcare Hero Award. So it's not just about school nurses or what's, it's really about healthcare in general, and we made sure that they knew just how special Kim is.
I guess the only thing I really want to add is she is a person who very much does not want the recognition. She'll never admit how hard she works. She is there for every single person in that building, every student, every faculty member. So I think it's just, it's very nice and wonderful she's getting it, because I think she needs to know how much we all admire her and recognize how hard that she works. So I'm very, just proud of her and proud of being a part of this.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. That's wonderful.
So that would be wonderful in and of itself, but another member of our staff has been recognized, and I got to do the honors today. I went to the New Hampshire Computer Technology Conference and Meredith, thank you, Matt, for reminding me, and Meredith today, and I got to award Josh Olstead, the Consortium of School Networking, has honored him with the Tech Leader of the Year for 2023. What makes this even more impressive is this is a national recognition, not just a school recognition. So again, you know, our faculty, as Suzanne pointed out, continues to be one of the most recognized, I would say, this year in the state, because it seems like every month we've had a faculty member or a staff member being recognized. And both of these people tonight certainly deserve the honors that they've received. So I just couldn't be more proud of our faculty and staff. And then, on a less enthusiastic note, but very important, I gave you guys a packet, or Suzanne gave you a packet, tonight that was distributed electronically at 7:00 PM. So part of what I try to do as superintendent is make sure you have the information before the public has the information, because I think that's courteous and the correct order of things. So next Tuesday, Fred Bramante, who happens to be a resident of Durham and former State Board of Education Chair, has been leading a revision of the 306 regulations that impact public education. So we're going to be holding, he's holding a listening tour, and we're allowing him to come to the high school. He's going to be talking to people from Oyster River, as well as, as well as Dover. The superintendent in Dover has agreed to distribute these same materials to his teachers and to his community, so hopefully we can have a good number of people come to this listening tour. We happen to be on the front end of this, so we're the first tour. I called the superintendent in Bo to find out, you know, what he had prepared for his night, which actually is the very following night, and he said, I'll take whatever you've got. So, you know, we are going to share our work with the state superintendent, so they don't have to reinvent the wheel. The topics of Tuesday includes changes in the regulations. So these regulations have the power of law. So one RSA 192 is the law, and then 306 is the department's regulations related to the law that actually sometimes are far more expansive than the law itself. So the topics that have, that are addressed in this listening tour will be school climate and culture, learning levels, personalized learning plans, competency-based learning, assessment, course-level competency standards and frameworks, work-study practices, school calendars and instructional hours, learning opportunities, physical activity, and then overall language and other areas. So why is this important? Because the state has been working on this in a much tighter network of people without a lot of educators on the committee. There was one superintendent and, I think, one teacher. And everybody else on this 306 committee were people not directly associated necessarily with public education. I think that Fred's heart is always in the right place. He wants what's best for children. But there are some parts of the language that's being considered that could be quite onerous for public schools, and there's language being proposed that is vague enough to be interpreted in many different ways. So in addition to the cover letter that you're seeing, I also included the New Hampshire School Superintendents Association analysis of the 306s. Their analysis is 15, or it's our analysis, is 15 pages long. The rules and regulations that are being changed are 168 pages long. So in our district, people like to have the source document. So in the email tonight, I've included the cover letter, the 15-page analysis by the New Hampshire Superintendents Association, and the 168-page rules and regulations. I only do that not because I anticipate that people who read 168- I only do that not because I anticipate that people will read 168 pages, but because so often in our district, people want to know, where's this coming from? So this literally is giving everybody in our community every piece of information we have in order to have an informed conversation with Fred. And Fred is taking his listening tour across the state, and he's taking the questions and comments people make back to the committee and back to the commissioner and back to the state board. So, I can't emphasize enough how important this meeting is if we want to influence the results. The 306 regulations have been presented to the state board, and State Board Chair Drew Klein tabled them. He wasn't ready for the discussion. He really has expressed interest in the feedback that these tours provide. So, I would encourage school board members, administrators, teachers, and community members who are interested in public education to attend this listening tour by Fred and, and ask him the kind of questions that are important to you as we move forward in public education in the state of New Hampshire. So, Tom, you had questions?
I just had a quick, what, what time is it on the, on the ninth?
It's 6:30.
6:30.
At the high school, in the auditorium. We chose the high school auditorium as opposed to the music hall because the music hall holds 900 people, and I expect that this kind of conversation isn't going to draw, you know, hundreds, but I'm hoping it'll draw many so that people can ask the questions that are important to us as public educators.
Just another question. These response from the New Hampshire School Administrators Association was in response to a draft that they received in February. Have there been any changes in the document since that, since that response?
We really don't know, Tom, because Suzanne and I chased after the 168-page draft for about a week before we got it. And all we can say is we think it's the latest draft. It's certainly current, but I don't know that the state hasn't made additional changes.
Okay.
We were at, truthfully, we were at the point of canceling the listening session because we hadn't received the document, and I just felt that was unfair to the community to ask them to come to a listening tour and not have any background.
Okay. Thank you.
So we got it today, and so everything you're getting tonight is literally hot off the presses. And I think, oh, kindergarten registration.
And, well, future discussion items.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. So, we are, thank you Denise, we are finishing up our work for this school year. And, and we have tied all of our presentations and every discussion back to our strategic plan and what the board requested of us at the beginning of the school year. So, we have a lot to do in a very short window, but what we have upcoming, of course, we have NASDAQ tonight, we'll have a sustainability report, these are the major discussion items as we close out this school year, sustainability report and DEIJ workshop on May 17th. We'll have a curriculum cycle discussion on June 7th, and then we'll have the end-of-the-year strategic plan report. And, you know, we gave you an update in the fall, and we gave you an update in January, and this will wrap up the year. So, for Tom and Gianna, they haven't seen that progression, but you'll see the end result of the work that the board asked us to do. We wanted to finalize the DEIJ work based on the goals that we established at the beginning of the year. And Jen Brown, who's sitting now in the audience, a fantastic communication coordinator who's just been a lifesaver for, for me and Suzanne, will have finalized the new webpage actually in, in just a couple of weeks, and we want to preview it to the board in that last meeting. Just an amazing amount of work by, by Jen and by Josh. And, you know, obviously, she's fed me periodically how it's going, and visually, it's so much more stunning. And I think that the board's desire to have a functional and attractive and informative webpage is going to happen soon. So I'm pretty excited by that. All right. So that's, those are upcoming events, and then, then we get to kindergarten registration. So, excuse me. I've had a couple of conversations with David and Misty over the course of, you know, since kindergarten registration. So I just, I always do this, and I just want to do it one more time. This is May, it's not August. So when we look at numbers this early in the game, we can almost go to the bank that they're going to change, and they're going to change up. So Heather and Denise being on the long-range planning and the NASDAQ enrollment report, you know, validate that we should see increased numbers. The reason I'm putting this in front of you now is because, you know, with the Mohairamit, we're looking at class sizes of about 15 to 1. And at Massway, because she has an extra kindergarten teacher, we're looking at class sizes of 12 or 13. If we hit July and those numbers stay low, then I will be asking Misty to reassign one of those kindergarten teachers into an upper class where the numbers are higher. So, it's not that we are asking the board to take a teacher away. What we're just sharing tonight is we, we want to reserve the right to be flexible in relation to the enrollment we see when we hit July. Then the other piece that's new, so for all the time that I've been superintendent, we've adjusted the elementary enrollment to our need for teachers. And of course, over the last eight years, it's been a gentle, slow decline in enrollment. When we go back to 11 years ago, this building had 417 kids in it, and we had portable classrooms, and it was jam-packed and crazy. It was never designed for that many kids. So, as we look at next year's enrollment and we're projecting, we're looking at enrollment of around, you know, 297 to 300, in the low 300s. And interestingly, you know, as, as I alluded to earlier, the same thing is, is happening in Lee. The numbers have gone from 370 down to the low 300s that we project for next year. So the good news is those are optimal sizes for elementary schools. They are really nice sizes where teachers get to know their students and the principals get to know their children, and it creates a, a much more family-like atmosphere, and, you know, nobody falls through the cracks when the, when those are the numbers that David and Misty are seeing. But, that declining enrollment, and you might recall from the NASDAQ enrollment report, we saw the enrollment declining, and then it'll start swinging back up. So we're in a cycle, we're in a cycle where it started to go down, and there's no question in my mind the cycle will start going up. The problem we have is that cycle doesn't start going up for about four school years. So the smaller numbers that we've seen populate the elementary school over these last eight years have finally reached the middle school. So this is the story. I know I took a long time getting there, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, we all were refreshed on how we've been doing this work. So, the middle school fifth grade coming in, the current fourth grade, is about 30 kids smaller than any fifth grade that we've seen in the last eight years. So when you think, you, you think about the work that we did at the elementary school, which is why I went through this long spiel, we adjusted our teaching population to the size of the student population. The reason I'm planting the seed tonight is this is the conversation that Jay and Suzanne and I are having now. So we traditionally have had four two-person teams. We've had the population to support four two-person teams. So now, we're 30, about 30 students lower than what we've had historically, and in the next meeting, Jay and Suzanne and I will present you options for you to consider in terms of matching our staffing needs to our student population. And this is an important exercise because this is, this is what this board has done, and this is why we have the reputation we have with the community. We keep the staff we need, not the staff that's there. And that is an accountability issue for the taxpayers, and it's also managing your resources effectively. And so, as we go forward into this next meeting, we'll have a brand-new presentation related to adjusting staffing and enrollment in terms of the middle school. That's going to happen for the next four years. Right? So each class coming in is going to be smaller than the class that's there. Five years down the road, it hits the high school. Middle, elementary and middle school are completely different animals. It's easy to adjust population of staff and students. When you hit the high school, it's not so easy because you have to have about 90 student reduction before you can start experiencing the matching of staffing to students because of the way a high school schedule is, is, is developed. So if you have 30 less freshmen, it doesn't mean that you can get rid of a freshman teacher because the freshman teachers are also teaching sophomores. So that's, you know, just kind of planting that. I won't be here for all this conversation, but I'm just laying out that you still have to be thinking about the future and matching your resources to your students. I'll be here for the next one, and that's the middle school one. But it does ultimately become a conversation for the board annually to do exactly what we did at the elementary and adjust staffing as necessary. So, it worked, has worked beautifully at the elementary school. Lots of times, we've been able to achieve it through retirement incentives, attrition, people moving on, and you don't necessarily end up having to lay somebody off. If you're looking at it very carefully and thoughtfully, you can lay out a plan so that you're not disrupting students and you're not disrupting staff. Occasionally, you might have to say, "Yeah, we, we have to have one less person," and there's no other way around it other than saying, you know, "A first-year teacher, a second-year teacher has to be let go." But, we've been very, very successful over the years of, of reducing our, our staffing and, and basing it on attrition. So, I plant all of that because this is how we've worked for 11 years, and I know that, you know, somebody else will be sitting in the seat in the 12th year. And I just wanted to plant all of those seeds now because it'll be difficult, as always, to adjust. So that's where we are, and sorry for the long-winded presentation, but there was a lot of ground, ground foundation stuff that I needed to do before we get to actually talking about the middle school next time. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Business administrators' report.
Good evening. I just have a budget update for you. I think it's been a while since I was able to get one together. Things are actually looking pretty good. Balances, that doesn't mean that's the balance we're going to have at the end of the year. There's a number of things that haven't been encumbered, a number of things that'll still be expensed for the next three months, but all in all, things are looking pretty good. Questions?
Just a question about, I know usually this is around the time of the year that we start talking about the fund balance, and if there is money that we can use, you know, usually what we try to do is move up in expense from the next year's budget and, you know.
Right, right.
So how is that looking? Is it looking like there's going to be anything to do that?
Not really. So we talked about that, and one of the things I'd like to do is try to get, I want to get all of the sick-day buyouts out of this year, and I want to try to get a few of those incentives out of this year.
Oh, okay.
So that would be my recommendation for any extra money. And that usually happens around the last payroll. Sabrina runs the last payroll. I say, "What do you got for a balance?" "Okay, take this out of there, or take that." So, if that's okay with you, that's what I'd like to continue to do.
So with that.
If I could just add, the advantage, the advantage of that is that it could have an impact on how much money we take from the reserve account.
Right.
So that's, so you're, it's a win-win if we can tap into those this year.
So that would, we would be looking at that at our second meeting in June, or would we be looking at that sooner?
Uh, maybe the second, maybe the first meeting in June.
First or second?
Yeah. And, and the other thing too, as Dr. Morris indicated, we do want to have that amount that we committed to, to offset taxes, and that's a big number, so depending on where that falls, you know. But we're, we're looking good.
Other questions for Sue? Yes, Heather.
I'm going to make it short. How is the new system working with putting all the encumbrances in, or do you feel like you know what you don't know with the new system?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, that was the challenge. Some of the things were in the setup and the way we had to set them up. So when we first ran this, I knew it wasn't right, and Tim knew it wasn't right. So we together go back and forth and say, "Okay, does that make sense?" And then we test it and go back and forth, and we're feeling pretty good about it now. So thank you for asking. Yeah, it's been a challenge, but it seems to be okay.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Student representative report.
So I don't have much to share because not much happened in school over break, but I will share that right now is AP exam season, so if you see some stressed-out upperclassmen, that's why. It'll be over soon. And then I just have some senior updates. Senior week plans went out Sunday night, so we have just like a rough schedule of what our days are going to look like. We don't have exact times or anything, but we know the activities that we're going to be doing and when our graduation practices are going to be and things like that. The deadline to sign up for project graduation was extended a little bit. It's now May 10th. I think we currently, as of yesterday, had about 80 people signed up for that, which seems a little on the lower end, so really hoping that more people will take advantage of that extended deadline. And then we also had a really successful mattress fundraiser. We raised about $1,000 for the senior class, and the three or four other student groups that were involved also raised about the same amount of money. So I just wanted to say thanks to everyone who participated.
Any questions? Thank you. No finance committee report, except I understand there might be a meeting scheduled?
Uh, we had a different calendar, we agree upon.
23rd.
23rd at 6 o'clock, right?
20, 23rd at 6 o'clock? Okay.
At the, uh...
Yes, at my office.
I did, for unanimous consent, I was supposed to roll in the, the PE and the Mohairamit psychologist and the landscaping into that, but I didn't say that. So I guess we'll leave them out for now and just, just go with unanimous consent as it's listed, which is the 2023-24 ESA Program Assurances and Equitable Services Affirmation, and then the nomination of the Massway Library and Media Specialist. Does anyone want to pull either of those out? No? Then I will move to adopt the unanimous consent agenda with those two items. Is there a second? Matt? All right. All in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. So that will take us down to the discussion and action items. So I think I'll go ahead so where I don't forget. The first item will be the, we, the, we have a PE teacher and a Mohairamit psychologist. The back out was sent out in your, in your electronic packets after the initial, after the initial Friday send out. I know I didn't catch it until tonight, but anyway, is there a motion to approve those positions? Yes, Tom?
I'll make a motion to approve both the high school PE position and the Mohairamit psych, was it psychologist position?
Is there a second? Okay, Gianna?
I second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Heather?
Can you give me like three minutes to read them because I didn't know they were in the packet?
Yeah, I...
Because I, I pulled it on Monday, and they usually don't change after Monday.
Yeah, I think they just, I think they just went out, so.
So Heather, we don't normally do that, but because of the number of openings we have as we're finishing, we're, you're going to see probably more of that as we go through the next couple of weeks because we don't want to lose candidates to other districts.
It might be helpful to... It might be helpful to send it, send an email that references that there's additional information, just because I know I'm the same way. I typically check it at the beginning, and I don't usually check it after that, so.
While Heather's doing that, I would just simply say that everybody who is involved in the interview process for both of these individuals is really excited about them joining Oyster River. So, both of them are at the beginning of their careers, and both of them rock their interviews.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Thank you. And then next, we have a bid for a mowing and landscaping contractor, and that also was added to the backup. So, is there a motion to approve the bid for, it is, I wrote it down, and I can't see what the name of.
Dream Earth or.
I wrote it down somewhere, but I can't find it, so if somebody sees it.
Dream Yards.
What is it?
Dream Yards LLC.
Okay. Is there, is, are you making a motion, Heather?
Yes, oh.
Oh.
Sure. I motion to approve the mowing landscaping contract.
Right into the microphone.
Karen heard me. I motion to approve the landscaping contract bid.
Okay, is there a second? Matt? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Okay, next item is the 2023-2024 Board Meeting Calendar. I can find it. Oh, here we go. Does anyone, are we, are we adopting that tonight, or is that just?
Just a review.
Just a review, okay. So, this is just a review at this point. Is there, is there any discussion or any, yes, Heather?
I didn't have a chance to look yet, but did we cross-reference this against calendars to make sure we don't schedule school?
Yeah, it's, yeah. Common practice now, so I, since this is just the first blush on it, we'll go back through it again just to make sure, but we have put all of the holy days, holidays, on the back of the calendar as part of our tradition now in order to not interfere with major events.
The one thing that I had, goodness, whatever, as far as the October Budget Workshop Day, I was, traditionally, it's like the last Thursday, which I did write it down, oh, October 26th, so I don't know if that, I know it's helpful for me, you know, to have it as far in advance as possible, so I don't know if it's possible to plug that in this early, but.
Budget workshop?
The budget workshop because it's on, on the calendar that we have. It doesn't have a date, it just says half-day budget workshop.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure it's in revised copy.
Okay. All right.
So, is bummed that she's going to miss that?
She's not paying attention to you.
She's got senioritis. Said you'd be bummed you're going to miss the next budget workshop in October. Are you going to come?
You can be our guest.
Did you, did you make sure the new child nutrition director knows how to make beef stew for you, though?
She'll learn.
All right, any other comments about the calendar?
I've got a random bit that I probably should have mentioned in the district reports. There was an email that all of us got about, from the New Hampshire School Board Association, and I just wanted to get a couple of things on the calendar, even though it's not really the district calendar, so I'm coming in a little late on this, but that annual delegate assembly is October 14th this year. And the important part there is that the deadline to submit resolutions is July 28th of this year. So, if we wanted to come up with something, the deadline is July 28th. So, there might be something we want to stick into agendas in the future if we wanted to discuss it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along then, we do have a list of policies for first read, actually? Is it only first read? I feel like it's second. It's first, gosh.
I have to, I have not read them before.
It's like, it feels like it's been forever. So, list of policies for first read, which is IKF graduation, JICI weapons on school property, and safe weapons storage, education, and then HF superintendent's role in negotiations. Anybody, can I have a motion to approve those policies? Tom?
I move to approve these three new policies here.
Is there a second? Discussion? Yes, Heather?
On the superintendent's role of negotiation, it looks as though the quotation marks were the only thing added to member, and I thought that was, like, he's a member, or the superintendent is a member of the board negotiations, even it seemed, seemed, I can hear myself, I know I'm good enough. It seemed awkward.
It's actually being taken out, so it was, right.
Striking that?
Yeah, we're, yeah, I know it was a little hard to tell, but yes, we're striking the quotation marks because we agreed with that completely. Other, other discussion? All right, yes, Gianna?
This is with the JICI policy, with the added information, added policy regarding safety. One thing I'm curious about is that the previous portion of that policy was talking about a minimum of an annual release of the information to students, and I'm wondering whether or not the safety information is on that same schedule, or whether or not it'll be a minimum of an annual information to adults and the community regarding the safety policy.
We do safety multiple times during the school year, not just once, so yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any others? All right, all in favor? We have seven in favor and the student rep in favor. So, that is approved for first read. School board committee updates? Yes, Heather?
Sustainability is meeting tomorrow.
All right, awesome. DEIJ committee met last night, and we had an absolutely wonderful discussion, very rich, talking about what DEIJ looks like, particularly at the elementary school, which I thank Trish Hall for that, but they're just across the board. We had a great, just a great discussion of some of the challenges and different approaches. And Gianna, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
No, but I'm agreeing particularly with Trish Hall's comments regarding that when you're looking about teaching DEIJ concepts or including them as a discussion, that it looks very different at elementary school level versus middle school and high school because there's developmental differences in the kids. And it's also, it was a good discussion about whether or not some of these questions should be student or teacher-led, particularly concerning HB2. So, it was a very beneficial discussion, but I thought it was very helpful.
Yep. And then the only other thing is the June meeting has been changed so that our student, student representatives to that committee can be there, so the new date is now Monday, June 5th instead of Tuesday, June 6th.
6:00 P.M.
Yes, at 6:00 P.M.
And I also believe it's in the middle school learning commons now, right? Instead of.
Yes, it's moved.
High school library.
Right, it's moved to the middle school commons, thank you, Paige. Any other committee updates? Okay, then, let's see, closing actions, future meeting dates, we are back in the recital hall for May 17th, and that will be, that will, after our regular meeting, we will have our rescheduled DEIJ presentation, and then June 7th. And then after this meeting tonight, we have a workshop by Nezdek to begin the process of talking about the superintendent's search.
Just before we close, Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to shout out to Alex and Caleb tonight. When we do the remote setting, as you can see, it is an incredible amount of work, and, you know, we do one at Mohairamit, and then the fall, we do it at Massway, and normally, Alex and Caleb are working hard even at the middle school, but you can see the extraordinary effort that has to go through when we try to do it remotely, so I want to thank them for the work they're doing.
I overlook the public comments. Is there any, any public comments at this time? All right, with that, we don't have any anon public, so can I have a motion to adjourn? Yes, Heather?
I motion to adjourn.
Second? Tom? All in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Thank you, we are adjourned.